Okay, we're good. All right, welcome everybody to our special meeting here conducted on the March 11th, our Governance Workshop. And so I wanted to open it up for a moment of silence. Supervisor Pyska?
Yeah, so Main Street Kelseyville lost a fixture this week. Randy Cedric passed away and she worked in many of the shops and it's just a really bright shining light for everybody. She will be missed and so a moment of silence for her family.
All right. IT Director French, could you lead us in the pledge?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Item four are timed items, 901 Public Input. So if there's anyone that has any public input they would like to add, I'm gonna check on Zoom because I don't think anyone has a public item here in the chambers. And I'm not seeing anything on Zoom as well. All right, our 4.2 item is Board of Supervisors Annual Governance Workshop with the County Department Heads. And let me pull this open. We'll give it to you, CEO Hutchinson.
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, Board. Does this look like it's shaping up to be a great day or what?
Yes.
When was the last time we were all together in the same room?
Yeah, we still can't hear.
I was saying, does this look shaping up to be a great day or what? When was the last time we were all together in one room? It's been quite a long time and it's exciting to see everybody's faces. I'm pretty thrilled, so yay. So first, Board, I want to thank you for your commitment to effective governance in Lake County and for keeping the community's priorities at the forefront through your support of Vision 2028. As you will recall, Vision 2028 emerged from a series of community visioning forums back in 2017, 2018, a name we use to describe most critical public conversations where we gather broad stakeholder input on what matters most to our Lake County residents. Subsequent community visioning forums have focused on topics like economic development and on improving our health outcomes. And you're also aware that in 2022, we'll be working with local leaders and with city and tribal government partners to host community visioning forums focused on diversity, equity, and inclusion. This will be a further grassroots movement and your Board's proclaimed priority to promote tolerance, respect, equity, and inclusion in Lake County and to identify the steps we can take to ensure our leadership and programs well serve every resident here. Gathering community input and identifying priorities is really important work in and of itself, but the real value of great ideas, plans, goals, vision comes through the actions we all take to implement them. I'm very pleased to be a part of today's 2022 State of the County Report. I want to thank the Chair and Vice Chair for working together with us to formulate this agenda. And I also want to thank Supervisor Sabatier because he was talking about us doing this last year. We didn't get to it. It was an unusual year last year, but certainly a great opportunity for us to feature all of the good work that's going on in the county. The agenda in front of you on the screen does frame what we're about to do today. You'll hear from elected and appointed department heads, many of whom are with us as you can see in person. A few of them are with us in Zoom for good reasons. You're going to hear from them regarding our accomplishments over the past year. They're grouped together in five sets of Vision 2028 priorities. At the end of each presentation, your Board will be invited to engage in open discussion with the presenters. Collectively, we've made tremendous progress and the community's priorities and your Board's direction have brought focus and energy to our work. Before we go any further, I want to say thank you to each department head and to every County of Lake employee. The creativity and endurance you have shown over the past two years of the pandemic and the past seven years of repeated natural disaster and public utility-driven disruption has been nothing short of extraordinary. You're an incredible team and the public services we provide are only possible because of the strength of our communities and the perseverance of our county employees. Thank you for your dedicated service and for continuously working to be even better. And so with that, I would like to introduce this morning's first group. And that group is Crystal Marketan, DSS Director, Gail Woodworth, Child Support Director, Todd Metcalf, Behavioral Health Director, Jonathan Portney, Health Services Director, Christopher Veatch, County Librarian, and Maria Valades, our Register of Voters. They're going to make the first presentation this morning and I wanted to invite them up to the table with the microphones if they would. Good morning.
I think so.
You'll need to bring it a little closer and you can pass those around as you need to.
Well, good morning, Board. Thank you for having us here. I will sort of drive this little presentation we have for you. This is gonna give you...
Yeah.
I'm not loud enough?
Do we need him to say that again or did any of that pick up, Sam?
No.
Okay.
I'm good?
No, no, one second. He's gonna go and...
If we could restart here in a sec.
All right, are we good? Okay.
All right.
Again, good morning, Board. Thank you for having us here. My name is Todd Metcalf. I'm the Director of the Behavioral Health Services Department and I will be sort of driving this presentation with the help of all of you here. I'm glad you're all here. I'm gonna give sort of a 30,000-foot level overview of our accomplishments over the past year. It might even be higher than 30,000 feet and I'm excited to share our accomplishments. So the group today is comprised of Social Services, Child Support Services, Libraries, Health Services, Register of Voters, and Behavioral Health Services. Do we have...
Matthew, can you put up their slideshow?
Oh, there.
There you go.
That looks familiar. So just to sort of bring us together... Oh, next slide, please. There we are. So just to bring us together on what Lake County Vision 2028 is and how it applies to our group, these were the three points on which we focused. These certainly helped support the Lake County Vision 2028 principles, which are, I promise you, I won't read any more slides after this one, but I think it's important to read them as we move forward. Consider and promote the well-being and economic resilience of every Lake County resident, promoting community collaboration, and of course, investing in our county's greatest resource, our people. Next slide, please. There we are. Boy, you're good. So let's talk a little bit about economic resilience. As you see there, the $8 million worth of grants are those that we all have applied for and received within the last 12 months. And again, I say "we," I'm not talking about Behavioral Services, I'm talking about all of us seated here before you. CalWorks benefits come from Social Services as well as the Medi-Cal benefits listed there. And Crystal, thank you for sending me that information because I think it's important to mention that, as it says there, over half, 51% of Lake County residents are receiving Medi-Cal benefits. And it's significant because a lot of the programs that we all oversee are Medi-Cal specific in that those that are eligible to receive the benefits and programs and services that we provide are available for those folks that receive Medi-Cal benefits. I also wanted to mention a little bit about Hope Rising. Some of us in this group here before you are heavily involved with Hope Rising. We participate on its board committees and subcommittees. And I'll talk a little bit later about more of the work we are doing with Hope Rising. Next slide, please. So let's talk about our people. You know, we all know about this pandemic. We're still navigating these waters. It looks like there's light at the end of the tunnel, but it's interesting to note that COVID actually opened up floodgates for funding opportunities around access to services. Most, if not all, county departments were able to take advantage of funding related to COVID-19 in order to support, sustain, and build new programs and services, thus improving the overall health and well-being of our community. Next slide, please. And so when we talk about our people, we must include our staff. We couldn't do any of this without the work of our staff. I want to say hats off to the Classification and Compensation Committee for facilitating an extremely detailed analysis of pay scales and position descriptions which led to improvement of staff retention due to increased rates of pay. The Board of Supervisors has been extremely supportive in these efforts and I want to thank you for that in ensuring accountability and transparency in each department's programs and services. And all county department staff certainly rose to the occasion around COVID response in helping Health Services work around what they did and continue to do in dealing with the pandemic. Next slide. So collaboration. Some of you may recall my references to the Community Health Needs Assessment over the years and how it touches so many of us, well, maybe probably all of us in the county. As I mentioned earlier, some of us in this group presentation are actively involved with Hope Rising and its efforts to improve health outcomes in Lake County as we unfortunately consistently rank lowest in health wellness in the state. As a result, Hope Rising has helped with increased community collaboration in an effort to cultivate and create new opportunities for funding and additional resources for Lake County residents. And the subject of collaboration must also speak to disaster response. I kind of cringe when I look at that up there. We're all too familiar with that. I want to call out Social Services. They are typically one of the first to coordinate with other organizations and county departments to set up shelter operations for those that have been evacuated. And Social Service team, once they get the shelter operation going, they reach out to other county departments if and when needed to assist. And this is a critical and crucial element to how we respond in the event of disaster. So thank you, Crystal, for your work there. So I'll be it brief. This concludes our presentation and I'd love to open it up if anyone has any specific questions about the material we covered and how we're working to support Lake County Vision 2028.
Supervisor Pyska?
I think I spoke with a few of you last year. I know I spoke with you, Todd and Crystal, and then recently Jonathan, about how we can prepare our community better for fire season and smoke and the PTSD that everybody has. We're doing a lot of work on physical fire prevention and mitigation, but I feel like this is a place where we can really grow. You know, I had a town hall last night. We could do events like that, giving people the tools for their mental hygiene, coping tools. You know, this year with the drought and not having the rain, when all the trees started blossoming in February, people were freaking out. There was a lot of panic happening with the trees dying, with the early spring, with the no rain. I started noticing what I wouldn't see, what I would see in our community in July and August happening in February. So we're dealing with this and I think the next logical step is working on our mental hygiene as a community. So I'm just wondering if you have any ideas. I know, Todd, you were great about putting out resources last year during the disasters, but what can we really do to start preparing people now or year-round or, you know, just giving them those tools?
I think, and speaking for all of us, I mean, it just still goes back to educating the community on what it is that we all do and what resources we can provide. It's an ongoing battle. I mean, I still get, you know, what does Behavioral Health Services do? And so it's just, it's just keeping the message out there and just letting folks know if you need help, this is who you call and we'll direct you wherever you need to go.
Yeah.
And I'm sorry, I don't want to speak for all of us.
Well, it was really a mental hygiene question.
Oh, well.
You know, taking it a little bit off the mental hygiene, but what I, this year, I am just really focused on this for maybe in my own life, but really in the experiences I've had since 2017 in terms of responding to wildfires here in Lake County is every community member here in Lake County needs to be prepared to evacuate and have a plan to plan for that evacuation, a clear plan and be prepared because the first responders we have available here when a fire first occurs are inadequate. If people think that they will have help in evacuation, I think it's a false sense of security. And so for me, with the number of disabled and seniors in our population, I think it is critical that they all understand they need a clear plan for evacuation and that, you know, they really are the responsible people for that. It's just frightening to me because I think a lot of people think that there's some help from the outside that will happen when a wildfire occurs.
Yep. Jonathan?
This one's working. Good morning. And I just want to express the importance of your question and how mental hygiene is holistic. It touches many aspects of resiliency. I want to express appreciation to Sheriff Martin and the team. We've been working on collaboratives around disaster management and response and I really appreciate the fact that we've been bringing in different spokes of our county leadership and teams to be able to look at this from a 10,000-foot view so that we ensure that knowing, to the best of our ability, that we start filling some of those gaps in response. What I will say from the Health Department side is our new health officer is committed to bring health education and resiliency information on a consistent basis rather than one-offs, right? So town halls are really important. I think they're great with health education information about resiliency and disaster management, but what we're really looking forward to, at least in our department, is bring other topics. What does it look like to eat healthy? What does it look like to have positive relationships? What does it look like, et cetera, et cetera? So we kind of ingrain it into our culture, not only of our community and county, but in our workplaces as well. So to mental hygiene, it's important and we look at addressing many aspects of that as we round out our response to disaster management.
So I guess backing up from communicating that with the public, how do we build that resiliency in our staff when we've been burnt out after so many disasters? So much is thrown onto our staff and our staff always shows up. Is there something that we could do to further support them, give them more tools, start preparing them a little bit before fire season so that they're not in that, in quite such a stressed environment for several months out of the year now?
Yeah, everybody's looking at me. It's, as I said before, I mean, it's an ongoing issue and you're right. All of our staff has stepped up and I think we're all doing the best we can to support them, but I've so noted. I will certainly take note of that. You know, we in my department do our best to support our staff however we can, but we should be sharing that with the community. I just had a conversation with Director Portney last night and we were talking about trauma-informed training for staff, which is something that I think everyone could most definitely benefit from. And so I will be working on that.
Great, thank you.
Some more to come.
Great.
All right. Vice Chair Scott?
I don't have any questions for this team because I work very closely with many of you with the Hope Rising and the work that we've done there. I just want to thank you for the great work. It has been amazing to see the transformation of Lake County in the last five years, where five years ago, we didn't have a shelter for those who are experiencing COVID-19 that we could take to get the services needed from Behavioral Health and Social Services and get them on the right track. So just that piece right there that we've done in the last five years has been extraordinary to help our community. So I thank you for that work that's been done.
I had a quick question, Todd. When you talk about Medi-Cal benefits, does that encompass partnership health? Is that somehow hand in hand or is that different?
I will now look to Crystal for that because I honestly don't know. You're the queen of Medi-Cal.
I don't even know how to respond to that. But what I will say is yes. I mean, essentially, the work done at Social Services is to sign people up for Medi-Cal. Where they use their Medi-Cal is up to them and then it's to maintain their eligibility. And so, you know, and this is, it's constant. And as you can see, I mean, even I was surprised by, it's essentially half the population, you know, receiving or using Medi-Cal for healthcare. And so we're the, we're that eligibility part of that, where it starts and how it's maintained.
Okay. And so what I mean is with the Medi-Cal benefits, they end up getting like a, is it partnership? Is that a derivative of Medi-Cal?
Partnership is one of the... You're more familiar with partnership than I am. Okay, so partnership is, I don't want to call it a program. It's a, it was a decision made to use this partnership model to where the Medi-Cal benefits flow through, is my understanding of it.
Yes, no, you're doing great. Partnership.
So the short answer would be yes.
Yes, okay, that's all I was wondering. Yeah, and I'm just wondering because of, you know, just some of the discussions that have been going on and they've been having some good stakeholder meetings about it to get some input. So I just wanted to make sure that that's hand in hand. A lot of the public doesn't understand sometimes that like even in the military, when you get health, it's TRICARE, Prime. And so people don't understand those differences. Sometimes I want to make sure that what we're talking about, they can plug in and say, ah, okay, that's what that is, that's all.
Well, it's, and I think the reason for that, it is very complicated, especially post-ACA. So, you know, because counties do make decisions and that end up impacting the end user. And is it entirely necessary for the end user to fully understand all of that? Probably not. I mean, they can go ahead and access benefits, but it is complex.
Yeah, very. And I just, one of the things I just wrote down when we were going over the portion of the PowerPoint was when it said "our people" and then you went into kind of a discussion about that. And because I didn't, I couldn't really, later on, you explained that it was both constituents or citizens and staff, employees. And it's always just important to keep a balance because sometimes, for whatever reason, staff objectives and citizen objectives conflict and it puts all of us at a very, very difficult situations at times. And so I think it's very important, and I'm just saying this for all of us, that we keep that, a good balance and try to, you know, and ensure objectivity and whatnot so that we can get those problems solved rather than, you know, defending one side or the other. Just adding that in. Is there any other questions or no? No questions, okay. Ms. Valades, Director Valades.
Good morning. One of our topics was community collaboration, but I wanted to point out also that not only do we have community collaboration, but we have collaboration between our departments. I wanted to, you know, express my gratitude to the Space Use Committee, Buildings and Grounds, Public Services, IT Administration Office, the Board of Supervisors, and my staff because with the collaboration between all these departments, our office was able to move to our new location just down the road. And, you know, these partnerships were integral to the completion of this project because from approving the relocation, securing the office location, the outstanding renovations, and the establishment of secure network connections, they're going to be essential for everyday work and public information availability. It is vital that the public is aware of their opportunities to vote and have access to free and fair elections that are transparent and this location's going to provide that to the public as well as our staff. We're excited to continue providing the highest quality of service to the residents of Lake County. So I just wanted to again, give a shout out to all the departments because it's not just community collaboration, it's department collaboration. I think we all sit here and help each other and, yeah, I know that, I want to thank the library and Department of Social, or Child Support Services because they've allowed me to place ballot drop boxes at their locations to give the voters more access to voting. So thank you.
Thank you. Well, with that, it looks like...
Anybody else have anything else to offer?
Then I'll go to...
I have to follow up on that. I agree 100% about the collaboration in this county is pretty amazing through, you know, the entire COVID response, the multiple iterations of that, through, you know, every year having wildfires. There's just a great collaborative relationship between departments. I have never had another department head say no when I asked for help with something in terms of a response and it really, I don't know that that happens in every county and I just want everyone, and I've worked with most department heads at some level, to know how much appreciated that is and that I do think it's somewhat unique in government work.
Thank you.
Anyone else? It's a great comment, Crystal. Thank you. I think that's what makes Lake County, Lake County. Okay, I think we're ready for our...
I'm looking on public input and I don't see anybody with their hands raised in the Zoom room. Is there anybody in the chambers? Because I think it's all employees here. It's all directors. So, all right, I'll bring it back and we'll go on to the next, the next number, Enhance Public Safety, Protect Our Residents, Disaster Prevention, Preparedness, and Recovery. Thank you for your, and thank you for the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For this group, we are introducing Sheriff OES Director Brian Martin, Chief Probation Officer Rob Howe, Animal Care and Control Director Jonathan Armus, Susan Cronis, our District Attorney, who I believe may be in court at this moment, and of course Anita Grant, our County Counsel. Matthew, can you put up their slides?
Thank you, Board. On behalf of this Subcommittee, I want to thank you for the opportunity to present during this. The previous presentation covered a lot of things that I think we would be talking about. And of course, our section's going to be focused on public safety, disaster preparedness and whatnot. One of the overarching challenges I think that many departments face is staffing and the fact that the District Attorney is having to appear in court is very emblematic of that, that... of that, that department heads and, and staff at all levels, from the line level all the way up through the ranks, are having to do so much more with less and have been for so long. Hopefully, we can, between the four of us here, we can answer any questions to the best of our ability that relate to the District Attorney's Office. We'll go ahead and start with our first slide. So, the presentation's formatted, we want to talk about some of the accomplishments that we've had as individual departments and some of our overall goals, both collectively and singularly with our departments. Over the last year, Animal Care and Control, and this is one that really affects the Sheriff's Office, because we get a lot of calls regarding animal issues, and they've been able to up their staffing and implement a 24-hour response capability around the clock, which is something that for, for quite some period of time was not available. And it really, having that ability provides a great service to the public. They've continued their work with the Red Cross and the DART teams. They continue their animal or their community cat program, which was implemented several years ago in response to an overpopulation of feral cats. This program, if I get it wrong, Director Armus, I think, will correct me, but this program allows people to bring feral cats in and have them neutered and marked in such a way that it can be, I mean, recognize that they're neutered, and help control the cat population, which is, is one of those things that, if left unchecked, can become a public health concern. And they're also working with national organizations to find homes for stray dogs. Do tremendous work over at the animal shelter. I myself own a rescue dog that is...
Me too.
He has quite a longevity to him. He's been around for a long time. Next slide. At the Sheriff's Office, some of our accomplishments in the last year, we've been able to hire a public information, community outreach engagement officer. It's a, a local person who I have great hopes will, will stay with the Sheriff's Office and the county for many years to come. It's allowed us to focus our law enforcement efforts a little bit more to law enforcement, while still maintaining the ability to get information out to the public. We've hired an emergency services manager after the retirement of our former emergency services manager. We've been able to restaff one of the school resource officer positions that we had to vacate due to some severe staffing levels. And we're going to start increasing our training and focus on the human trafficking program, or human trafficking problem that, that affects all of our communities. We started with the training last week that was put on with Lake County Resource Center, and we're looking forward to seeing more operations and enforcement action regarding this very, very horrible activity that goes on. We've been able to implement an automatic, automated license plate reader system. It's helped us solve several crimes throughout the last year, putting together investigative leads and whatnot. And we're very transparent in that, we have our, our policy available on our public website if people have questions about how that system works. We've secured a gun violence reduction grant, which provides staffing for 75% of a detective who's focused on making sure that people that are prohibited from possessing firearms aren't allowed to do so. We have a camera registry program. We always have questions from the public, what can the public do to help? This is a free program that we have available. If you have a security camera, a Zoom, or anything like that, you can register that camera with the Sheriff's Office. And it doesn't allow us access to it, but it lets us know where those cameras are in the event that we might need them for an investigation. Of course, the COVID, COVID pandemic, we've been dealing with for two years and had the protocol implemented in our jail. We've restaffed the roadmap task force positions that we also had to do away with due to staffing shortages. And over the last 12 months, we've hired 20 new employees. As far as disaster response and preparadness and notifications, we've entered into agreement with the Kelseyville River area for an additional notification. And probably the largest accomplishment, I got to thank, during the previous presentation, it was the collaboration was mentioned, the collaboration that we experienced between county admin, between the state, our, our local politicians, and allows us to secure the National Guard armory. And I think that's one of, can be one of the big programs that we see going into the next couple of years, getting the Sheriff's Office moved over there. It's going to have a cascading effect on, on several departments, is it'll open up some much-needed spaces for some of the other county departments as well. Next slide. Our District Attorney's Office, the, over the last year, the District Attorney's Office has had to hire two new deputy district attorneys. I know that there's, there's some district attorneys that are coming up on retirement age, and hopefully, we're able to keep them working a little bit longer, but I know that recruitment's going to continue to be one of the challenges DA's office faces over the next year, two, three years. There's been a backlog of cases in the, in the courts due to COVID. The DA's office is working heavily with the courts to address those problems, the backlogs, and get those done. The, I think Director Metcalf mentioned the opportunities that presented themselves based on, due to COVID. One of them was video appearances for court that were, they were able to implement, which has greatly helped the District Attorney's Office, greatly helped the Sheriff's Office, and particularly the jail, and really streamlined some of those court processes. So I think there's going to be conversations on how that continues to, the video court appearances continue to play a role right here in Lake County. Due to COVID restrictions, obviously, space, social distancing was a consideration. So the, the courts and the DA's office and the Sheriff's Office came up with a very good solution and held several trials over at the fairgrounds, where they were able to do jury selection and have trials with adequate social distancing protocols in place. And the DA's office is now in the process of establishing an outreach program to our closest law school, which is Empire Law School, in order to try to improve recruitment efforts and maybe have a, maybe an internship program, or some kind of program where we're getting some, some applicants out of that Empire Law School program, which is right over the hill in Santa Rosa, and hopefully get them up here to work in Lake County. Next slide. Our County Council, the, I would, I'm going to go out, I mean, I don't even think I'm on a limb here, and say that our County Council is probably the hardest-working department head that you have. When we talk about department heads having to pick up the slack, your County Council does a tremendous amount of work. She's humble, she will not take credit for that, but I'm going to wave her flag for her. None of us in this room would be able to function without her advice and her counsel. That, that's from everybody on that, on the board up there, to sitting at these tables here. And a, a, a big heartfelt thank you to what Anita Grant does for this county and their rest of us. Some of the things that she's done while severely short-staffed, I had Rob sit between us so she couldn't hit me. Over, over the last year, and I don't think there's enough time in the data to adequately outline everything that she's done, but she's worked on issues regarding land use, liability, employment issues, litigation, workers' comp, juvenile matters, a lot of things that we just have no idea the County Council does, that she, that her department does on a daily basis. 10 complex civil litigation matters over the last year. I don't know if she'll be able to talk about those, but I can tell you that the amount of time and work that goes into those is, is fairly overwhelming. And as I said earlier, she's worked with every department in here to overcome obstacles that we might have in trying to carry out the board's direction or vision, which includes reviewing all kinds of contracts, dealing with the, the five dozen ongoing juvenile dependency cases, and just, I can't say enough for what she does. And I think her recruitment efforts are going to continue, so hopefully, we can get her position staffed with some, some true professionals. Next slide.
Brian, let's also not forget that she's our psychotherapist.
Yes. Our probation department, there's been a lot of changes in the criminal justice system. I think we're going to continue to see a lot more changes over the years. And that doesn't just affect the frontline law enforcement, it also has a tremendous impact on our probation services. The probation, probation department serves as the arm of the court, kind of the, almost like the enforcement action for the court in many matters. And, and over the last year, they've been able to add some additional field staff to start addressing some of the, the changes and requirements that have come down through the legislature and through various court decisions. One of those things is a pre-trial supervision requirement. The probation department's got a program for, in anticipation and in response to some of those items that have come up. The school resource officer position, we've, we've got a lot of school districts that want school resource officers, and again, some of the staffing challenges that we see at the Sheriff's Office, the probation department has been able to step in with some very highly capable probation officers who have a lot, quite frankly, in a lot of cases, have a lot more experience in dealing with juveniles that are at risk or, or justice involved. And he's been able to fill one of those school resource officer positions to help out our partners in the school system. And speaking of partnership, they've partnered with the Office of Education to offer wraparound services for those youth, in an effort to try to steer them away from a life of crime and maybe get them pointed on the right track, so they become productive members of society. Next slide. Our collective goals for this year, continue to improve our recruitment efforts. We're going to have a recruitment training, I think, next month is the, I want to encourage all the department heads in here to keep an eye out for some messaging that's going to come out, for some training that we're going to provide, that will hopefully be beneficial for all of us in our recruitment efforts, in trying to reach out the workforce that we're dealing with in, in this 21st century. We want to increase our participation in the roadmap task force. For those that aren't aware, the roadmap task force is a task force consisting of law enforcement, community development, animal control, and hopefully, probation in the DA's office here, to try to tackle issues that are, have co-occurring offenses that involve criminal offenses, quality-of-life offenses, code violations, zoning violations, and those types of things, to really try to get our communities back to, to a level where we'd like to see them. We're going to start focusing a lot on environmental crimes, take, that roadmap task force will be focused on efforts that can, that are going to target people not only for criminal violations, but for civil violations, when there's crimes that are committed against our environment. There's some advertisements coming up. Those aren't part of my presentation. We're going to continue to work with the courts to address the backlog of court cases. We anticipate at the jail that this is going to be a fairly significant issue, as all these, these court dates have been deferred. It's going to also impact the probation department. All these court dates that have been deferred because of COVID, the warrants that have been issued over the last two years are probably going to all start being enforced, and I imagine we're going to have a, a significant increase in our population at the jail when that happens. And hopefully, we can respond to that, limit the amount of time that impacts us, and get to where we need to be in a routine operational environment. And the last thing, we're going to be, the Sheriff's Office is going to be participating in a regional human trafficking task force, where we're working with, and the board's already heard a couple of items on this, I want to thank the board for their support on this. But we're teaming up with five Northern California counties in an effort to create a regional task force to address the human trafficking problem that, that surrounds labor trafficking, commercial, commercial sex trafficking, and also is involved in the illegal cannabis and environmental crimes that we see so prevalent around the North State. That might be the last slide. Let's see, is there any more? I think that's it. And with that, I will gladly take any questions and pass them down the table.
Vice Chair Scott?
Good morning. Thank you, Sheriff, for that presentation. I saw that you said you hired 20 new hires this year. How many have we lost? So how many are we up?
We're about the same. Our, our numbers are, yeah, about the same. It's a little frustrating, because I, I think, I see all these new faces come in, and I feel like we're making some headway, but then when I look at our, our overall roster, we're still continuing to lose people, to retirements, to going to other agencies, to, to all kinds of various reasons. But, yeah, the, it's a never-ending effort to try to get people hired. I hope to see someday that we can do away with our recruitment sergeant and have that person just go back to traditional law enforcement functions, but it's, yeah, it's not, we're, we're not going backwards downstream. To put it in perspective, when I started here in 2005, we had 167 people actually working at the Sheriff's Office, 167 or 168. And I think now we're at 119. This week, on Monday, I had one of my detectives retired. So it's, you know, several years, many, many years of experience that we're going to have to replace. And so, we're no longer going downstream, we're just maintaining what we have right now. So we're hoping to, hoping to improve our efforts.
If there's one thing we could do as a board sitting up here to help you, what could it be?
Oh, gosh. Well, I, I will tell you that one thing that you did do that helped was the, the passing and the adoption of the recommendations on the recruitment retention. I think any support you can offer to individual departments in their recruitment efforts, I don't know that there's a one-size-fits-all. Those things helped out, the, the bringing our wages up to a little bit closer to where they should be, the supporting of the hiring incentives, and, and really helping us get the message out that, you know, Lake County, this is, you're not going to make a bunch of money working here, but it's a pretty good place to live. Everybody here calls it home. I, I share with people, I grew up here, I worked somewhere else, I ended up coming back here, because this is a good place to work. Certainly, I know the, the bargaining units have met and had their contracts ratified for several years, so that's probably not something on the close horizon. But wages and benefits are always a concern. I think the, if, if we see some significant increases in our healthcare costs, contributions, I think that's a, an opportunity that's, that's ripe for the picking to kind of ease that burden on people. What we found at the Sheriff's Office, and it's probably very similar with other departments, is that when people start a family, if they go from being a single employee and have to pay full coverage, healthcare for their entire family, it's, it's quite a financial hit. So I think there's opportunities there for, for talks.
Good, thank you.
I think too, for, one of the things I'd like to highlight, especially, you know, thank you for this presentation, and it hit a lot of things I'm glad that the community gets to hear. One of the things I try to emphasize when, in discussing in town halls, or even with the constituents, because of, you know, our, our situation with people that are backlogged in what we're talking about, with the, you know, having the hearings at the, at the fairgrounds, rather than the court, things like that, is that that's also some things that are beyond our control, not only is law enforcement, but it is the DA, or is anyone sitting here. And I, at RCRC, we discussed a lot of those issues and some of the bills that are coming up that I know Supervisor Sabatia sent as well. And so, I'm trying to ensure the public knows that in some of our meetings, when I talk with them, that, yes, that could happen, however, that person got right back out and committed the same crime, or whatever the case may be, or the squatting issues, things like that. So I just want to highlight that the work that you've done is tremendous for now, you know, and we know that there's, you're limited because of some of the state laws, if that makes sense. So just wanted to highlight that, and thank you for the work that you've done and for the presentation.
Thank you.
Anyone else at this table, this group?
Well, as I think most of you know, I found Brian's comments cringe-worthy. Though I, I appreciate his, his good feelings toward my office, I did want to say that my office very much appreciates your board, admin, and everyone in this office. And I do want to particularly say to the two gentlemen to my left, I always find their conduct to be exemplary. So, thank you.
Thank you.
So I'd like to thank, I'm Rob Howe, Chief Probation Officer, for the county. I'll thank the board for the opportunity. And just with, with Sheriff Martin's comments about the staffing, we're a little bit the same, we're kind of treading water right now, but I wanted to add a glass-half-full view of that. I think the improvements made by the board were made at a unique time with, with the pandemic, and I don't think we've seen the, the true benefits of it yet, and the true positive impact it's going to have. So again, thank you for those, those actions, and that continued effort is, I think, going to work.
Supervisor Price?
Yeah, I really appreciate the, the presentation and the cooperation, working with all of you. But I'm wondering, Sheriff, if you can kind of get into a little bit more on what the strategy for illicit cannabis is going to be this season? I know you're going to be using environmental crimes as part of that, but just, that's a question that we get asked a lot, and so I'm wondering if you can share a little bit more.
One of the main focuses of the roadmap task force is to deal with some of those illicit cannabis operations. The, the problem, particularly in the North State, is, is quite overwhelming for most of the counties up here. When the chair asks what they can do with recruitment efforts, I would offer some suggestions what the board could do with, to help support our efforts in illicit cannabis operations. And that's to recognize that a lot of the laws that are made at the state level don't take into consideration the impacts on our rural counties. The, the majority of the populace lives in urban areas, and they just, you know, they might see a cannabis store pop up here and there, and they don't really, you know, give a second thought to the actual environmental impact that counties like Lake, Mendocino, Humboldt, Trinity, Del Norte County, Siskiyou County, experience with the tremendous financial impacts. If, if the DA was here, I think, I feel safe saying that she would say that it's very difficult to, if not impossible nowadays, to secure a conviction for somebody simply for illegal cannabis cultivation. It just, juries don't have... It just, juries don't have the appetite for it. So focus on the environmental crimes, that's the true, I think, the true long-lasting impact and start to bring awareness and really push the legislature to pass laws that give us the teeth to go after people for the environmental crimes. We're going to continue to go after the human trafficking aspect of it. When people think of human trafficking, it's not, you know, somebody in a white van capturing somebody and then running them off. That does happen, but typically, human trafficking is more benign appearing while not benign. And the fact is, a lot of these places that are engaging in this are bringing people in under threats of coercion, fraudulent pretenses, or forcing them to work in the illicit cannabis industry. And those are areas where we do find that we have some success in our prosecution efforts. People, there's just not an appetite for, you know, what's going to be portrayed as the couple that just wants to grow some marijuana or somebody's trying to make a little bit of money. But when the reality sets in, when there's participation in the illicit cannabis market, that there's a lot of other crimes that go along with that and that have a true impact on actual people. The other factor that comes in, a thing to consider, is that when cannabis became legalized, we're also starting to see some partnership and cooperation from the people that participate in the open market, I guess we'll call it, in the legalized, regulated market. And they also feel the impact of the illicit cannabis that's being pushed into their competition. So our tactics are this Roadmap Task Force, we're going to continue our work with our illicit marijuana eradication efforts, our investigation efforts, and try to focus on some, maybe securing some civil penalties for these people that are continuing to violate our economic, our environmental laws and infiltrating our neighborhoods and ruining the quality of life for people who just want to have a nice place to live and not be bothered by the other activity that goes on with the illicit growths.
Thanks, I appreciate that. I know anybody that's listening probably appreciates that understanding too. Do you have a ballpark idea on how many eradications happened in the last year?
I want to say well over 180,000 plants. And then just this year so far, we had a significant investigation that resulted in 7,600 pounds of processed marijuana that was packaged for sale, which I haven't seen anything like that in my career. Chief Houseman in law enforcement longer than I have, but that amount of marijuana, this isn't 7,600 pounds of stem stalks, seeds, and, you know, root balls, this is marijuana that was processed for sale that somebody had here. And I don't know whether that's a result of the market being flooded with marijuana or a result of an operation that's just taken such a deep hold in our community that they felt like they could operate like that. But the eradication efforts of, it's not unusual for us to hit 180,000, sometimes well, north of 350,000 plants in a year.
Thank you.
With regard to the illegal marijuana growths, I can say that there is an unfair business practice action that can be brought, it can be brought by the DA's office, it can also be brought by my office. We've done those in the past, and what that would do is to allow the environmental damage to be fully addressed and to put hopefully an end to the illegal growth, which also operate at the expense of the legal growers who are doing everything right. So that's something, if my office gets fully staffed, we'd be very happy to participate in those kinds of actions.
That sounds like an action plan. Thank you.
You won't hear this said very often, but we need more attorneys.
Jonathan, you were pulling your microphone closer. Did you have something to add?
Yeah, just going to thank Brian for the presentation. And then one other thing that animal control had this last year is we were able to certify two-thirds of our animal control officers with the state of California, indicating that they've had enough training and experience to be commended for those and just their ability to respond in the field.
All right.
And JT, I don't believe there's been a time in recent memory that animal control had its positions all filled, and I don't want to jinx you here, but that is true now, is it not?
Yeah, we are actually 100%, 100% staffed. The class of cop study really helped our ability to recruit, especially for like our kennel assistants and, so, yeah, we're very grateful.
And I think it was smart to start off the presentation with the puppy dog, too.
I was just wishing one of Anita's dogs had posed for that slide.
Because they're gorgeous.
Yeah.
All right, I'm going to, is there any other questions or comments?
So we heard that there used to be adoption animals that would come into the chambers?
I was just speaking about this with my deputy director, we were talking about doing that again.
I would love to do that, but do not let me take any animals home.
But we do have a plan to try.
Pet of the day, yeah. We had to let that go because of staffing shortages, but everybody sure enjoyed that and a few lucky dogs went home with me and a few other people.
We're looking forward to that.
Just one closing remark, you know lawyers, we just can't shut up. I did want to just say that, you know, so much appreciation to your board, to admin, Carol, to everybody at this table, and everyone behind me and online, everyone works so hard. Certainly not just my office, everyone works so hard. And we work very hard to work together, so I'm very appreciative for everyone in this room.
Thank you, Ms. Grant. I couldn't agree more. I'll open it up for public input, and I don't see anybody online with their hand raised. And, yeah. All right, well, it looks like we.
Thank you, group two.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation.
Shall we keep going, Mr. Chair, or would you like to come for a break? Or what is your preference?
Keep going.
Keep going.
Yeah, I guess we'll.
So our third group is comprised of Public Works Director Scott DeLeon, Special District's Administrator Scott Harder, Public Services Director Lars Ewing, who's with us in Zoom, Community Development Director Mary Darby, Air Quality Management Officer Doug Gerhart, and Ag Commissioner Catherine Vanderwal. Welcome, everyone.
Good morning, Scott DeLeon, Public Works and Water Resources Director. It's a pleasure to be here this morning and joined by most of our group. I understand Lars is on and.
Doug and Lars are both.
They are, I see them, thanks. Thanks, gentlemen. Our presentation is a little different format. What I'm going to do is start off and just give a very brief overview of our group, and then I'm going to turn it over to the respective department heads to talk about their individual accomplishments. And we have a PowerPoint presentation to help guide us through that. And so, again, good morning. Thank you again for the opportunity. We're group three, and our goals for the 2028, Vision 2028, include growing our economy, spurring job creation, improving our infrastructure, and caring for our environment and natural resources. This morning, you're going to hear the accomplishments by the Community Development Department, Public Services Department, Special Districts, our Air Quality Management District, the Agricultural Department, and then finally, Public Works and Water Resources. And so with that, I am going to turn it over to Mary Darby, our Community Development Director, and take it away.
Good morning, everyone, to the board and to my fellow colleagues. The Community Development Department contributes to the Vision 2028 goals of growing our economy, job creation, caring for our environment, the reorganization of the department, streamlining our permitting process, managing our cannabis cultivation projects, and conducting project evaluations of permits, complaints, and processes. Some of the accomplishments we've had thus far since I've been a part of the department is that we've developed special resolutions and ordinances to streamline processes and protect the environment, such as SEQA guidelines or enforce SEQA guidelines in terms of EIR's records retention schedules. We've also moved aggressively in terms of our recruitment process to hire staff. We have increased our capacity in the department. We filled 10 positions out of 17 that were vacant. We have reviewed our in-house procedures and software packages with an eye toward improving efficiencies of project processing. That includes our SLA software, our data ticket, which we're proposing to order to help code enforcement, our Adobe Suite software to help with our cannabis control and our GIS processing to identify where cannabis locations sites are. And we've also included our increase of visibility survey requirements as we look at our scenic combining districts. We have also, we oversee the structure, oversee our boards as the AVA program, our hazardous vegetation program, and our Roadmap Task Force, and currently rewriting thresholds for our tree removal processes and our water usage for our cannabis projects. Some of the other things that we've done thus far is that we hired a cannabis program manager to oversee our cannabis applications and our outstanding cannabis projects. We made presentations on cannabis, on the status of where they are and the restructuring of the CDD department. We've hired two code enforcement officers that's been with us for a couple of months now, and we're advertising for a cannabis code enforcement officer currently and a community development technician. We are in the process of hiring a customer complaint representative that will review all of our complaints that come through our department. That position should be filled by April of 2022. We're writing thresholds, as I mentioned before, for water usage, tree removals, and to protect our environment. We've implemented procedures and software packages to improve the efficiency of our project processing, in particular, our SLA program. We've hired a business software analyst that is implementing and training staff to use the SLA, so the community as well as in-house staff will be able to identify through live streaming where a project is in the process. And we are in the process of training our staff. We have staff going through the CASIO training, they begin in May, all of our code enforcement officers. We also have trained our staff in the planning division on our SEQA guidelines. And in addition, we are training our staff in our Building and Safety Department on building inspections. That would complete some of the things we've accomplished this year.
In how many months?
I was going to ask a few questions. Yeah, how many months?
So, in four months.
Mary, thank you. Lars, you want to just jump in and I'll invite every department head who's up next to just take over the presentation, so Lars.
We may have the wrong slide up. It looks like the slide is Special Districts. Matthew, did we skip one or?
That's okay, we'll adjust.
Or did we skip? I don't know.
I think so.
Okay.
No, I don't think so. Good morning, thank you, board. Thank you for this opportunity to present.
Scott, can you pull the mic a little closer?
Closer, sure. Speak up, is that what I'm hearing?
Well, we just weren't picking you out. There you go.
The Special Districts Department contributes to Vision 2028 goals primarily through the implementation of capital projects aimed at improving water and sewer infrastructure within the county. That has cascading benefits to our environment and natural resources. If we can reduce or eliminate sewer spills, we're going to protect our natural resources and our environment, our lake. It also grows our economy by providing employment opportunities for consultants and contractors within the local and regional area. You know, just in the last 12 months, we are working on about $29 million in open grant-funded projects. We focus a lot on grants. Because Lake County is a severely disadvantaged community, it's really challenging to do large capital projects on the back of our ratepayers. The water and sewer rates typically pay for ongoing operations and maintenance-type activities, but for large capital projects for infrastructure improvements, we really have to rely on grants. And with the board's help and admin's help and my staff's help, we've been able to be really successful at securing significant amounts of grants to keep those type of projects moving forward. Next slide, please. Thank you. So in the last 12 months, we have completed a couple of new bolted steel tanks up in our Sodobay Water District. That was a hazard mitigation grant as a result of the fires. We were able to secure funding to replace old aging redwood tanks with bolted steel modern tanks. You know, provides resiliency up there, provides protection from the threat of fire up there, and it keeps those infrastructure safe during fires. You know, you don't have to worry about the redwood tank burning down because it's bolted steel. So we've also are working on finalizing and wrapping up installation of battery backup systems. This was funded through S-GIP, through the California Public Utilities Commission, large battery backup banks at some of our larger facilities, wastewater treatment plants and our large sewer lift stations. It's going to provide resiliency during power outages. They are sized to provide a minimum of four hours at peak demand. Typically, the stations aren't running at peak demand all the time, so we're going to anticipate seeing extended runtimes. It provides also the ability to do what's called as peak shifting. So PG&E is shifting a lot of facilities to a time-of-use structure. So you get penalized for using power during those peak demand periods. Having a large battery backup on-site allows us to charge the battery when power is low cost, and then use the battery to power the station when it's peak-priced, so we can reduce our operating expenses. We're anticipating anywhere between 10 and 15% reduction in our operating costs at those larger lift stations. Next slide, please. With the recent drought, we've seen opportunity for increased funding, emergency funding. We were able to secure a couple million dollars for our North Lakeport Water Treatment Plant, funding to extend the intake and look at the possibility of drilling a well as for our Spring Valley Water System. And then the next item, that's one that I'm really happy about. We're part of the West Sacramento Integrated Regional Watershed Management Group, MAFUL. It's a group of five counties, and we're participating in that in Calusa, Napa, Solano, Lake County, that looks at watershed management from a regional perspective. There's funding sources through that that are intended to fund projects that benefit the region as a whole. So this last recent cycle, Lake County was very successful in securing about $5 million worth of funding for projects within the county. And it's not just county districts, water districts, Hidden Valley Community Services District is part of that as well. So they are doing a water tank replacement project, they are doing some INI influen- infiltration reduction work. So, you know, they're improving their sewer infrastructure, again, to reduce those chances of possibilities for spills. We have similar work, we've got INI reduction work going on now during Clear Lake and in Lower Lake. We've got a reservoir recovery project in Spring Valley, so the Spring Valley reservoir that's out there, we're doing dredging projects out there as part of this project. Waterline replacements in Kelseyville and Spring Valley, and I mentioned the INI reduction already in Clear Lake and Lower Lake and in Kelseyville. So that's a really broad brush, and it's a broad program, and it has wide-reaching impacts throughout the county to really, you know, protect our natural resources, improve quality of life for our constituents. Next slide, please. And that was it for me. That's all I get, shut up? Is that what you're telling me? All right, air quality. Doug?
Yep. Well, good morning, board and everyone. This is Doug Gerhart with the Lake County Air Quality Management District. Now, the air district is, you know, a little bit unique, as you all know, but we do participate and we do things that directly and indirectly help promote the Vision 2028 goal of the county. And as a regulatory agency, your main goal is to maintain ambient air quality standards in Lake County. And what that does is it continues many exemptions that exist for many industries in Lake County. So there's a lot of things that they don't, that industries in Lake County don't have to do with state regulations and federal regulations and local regulations even, because we maintain that ambient air quality standard. So this affects residents, it affects ag, it affects trucking, equipment operators, and quite a few others. So that's the good news. We continue to maintain our ambient air quality standards even with the wildfires. The wildfires do affect us, not toward our attainment, but they affect other program-related things such as monitoring programs. We are dealing with EPA on a number of issues that we're finding grants to cover the new requirements that EPA is passing on to us because of wildfires. So we're protecting the community. So we're protecting the community, but we're being hit by the new requirements as well. So, but the goal here is to find money to, to prevent that from impacting the community. So some, some of the activities that we've done this year, you know, we funded replacement of three school buses, two in Middletown, one in Kelseyville. These are the full-size buses with new, much cleaner diesel buses. We are working on grants for three electric buses, and these are the mini buses. So we're looking at, you know, working with some funding programs to, over the next few years, do three electric buses, and that will lead slowly toward the improvement of infrastructure for electric vehicles for the schools, so that the larger buses, when battery capabilities are available, they will be able to upgrade and run cleaner equipment. So next slide. Additional programs we're working with, we've funded, well, we're in the process of funding portable air filters for schools. These are primarily for the gyms and multipurpose rooms, so that every school has a large indoor clean area for, you know, wildfire events or other events that affect the ambient air quality standard at the school, so kids have a clean and safe place to go during these, during these events. This is, you know, these are expensive, but $90,000 grant program that, you know, for these. We funded several tractors in the last year through the farmer program. We were replacing wood stoves with cleaner burning stoves. A few people have gone to gas, and there's electric options, there's a number of options, but most of them have gone from an uncertified stove to a new certified stove. And that cleans up and reduces community localized impacts and reduces complaints in, in the tighter communities. We have several program, other grant programs that provide funding for various monitoring efforts in the county. Next slide. Nope. Okay, you can go back one and I'll finish up. So with that, with the grants, just so, you know, we're pursuing grants for everything that we can, because anything we don't fund with grants, we have to fund through local costs, and that means raising fees. So at the moment, this past year, we're pursuit, we've received in the range of $800,000 to $900,000 in grant funding for different programs and to reduce costs and improve the ambient, the monitoring and improve the ambient air in communities. So that's all. Now you can go to the next slide.
Good morning, Board. Catherine Vanderwall with the Agriculture Department. So similar to Doug, in a sense, the Agriculture Department is regulatory in nature, and many of the programs we work in are designed to care for and protect our environment and natural resources, which aligns with the Vision 2028 goals. So some of the highlights over the past year for the department include a coordinated effort with Grow West and Interstate Ag Plastics to provide an annual pesticide container recycling collection event for the local farming community. So this program provides for the safe disposal of clean and empty pesticide containers. These containers are collected and then recycled to be used for industrial plastics. So the department also completed two wood-boring insect surveys over the course of two years throughout the county. These surveys were conducted for the Mediterranean oak bore and the invasive shot hole bore. And both of these insects pose a threat of increased tree mortality to tree species found in Lake County. Additionally, we were able to obtain a grant through the State Department of Food and Ag to provide collaborative assistance with the Lake County Resource Conservation District in management efforts for the invasive weed GOTHRUE. The GOTHRUE infestation lies on the border of Lake and Mendocino Counties, so it's actually shared between our county and Mendocino County. And this location is the only known infestation of this weed within the state, and it's been deemed a high priority by the state. Current management efforts include containing the known infestation as well as surveying the watershed that it lies within, because there's concern, you know, for this weed making its way down into Clear Lake. Next slide. So we also were able to maintain our inspection services that help protect the local food supply and environment. These include our parcel inspections where staff have intercepted diseased plants, invasive plants, and invasive insect and animal species from being introduced into our local environment. We have also maintained our exotic insect detection programs, which are designed to detect pests that pose a threat to our local food supply and environment prior to them becoming established. And lastly, we worked with the State Department of Ag to obtain critical COVID PPE supplies, which were then distributed to the local agricultural community and agricultural businesses. And this, this effort aided them in being able to obtain their, obtain the necessary personal protective equipment to help maintain their operations.
Thank you, Catherine. I'm going to go ahead and go next, and then we'll bring Lars in to finish up our presentations. For Public Works and Water Resources, we're tasked with meeting the Vision 2028 goals of improving our infrastructure and protecting and caring for our environment, environment and natural resources. Some examples of projects from both departments that we've completed or in the process of completing. Public Works hired an engineering consultant to prepare a five-year pavement rehabilitation plan with the goal of improving our overall road network from a pavement condition index of currently 37 to 70. That's a very lofty goal. We'll be bringing a presentation back to your Board in April, and it's, it's, again, very lofty, but one of the goals of Vision 2028 is to improve the infrastructure and certainly our road network is, is something that affects every, every one of your constituents and every person traveling, both residents and visitors in Lake County. We are continuing our efforts to purchase property along the South Main Street-Sodobay Road corridor, and we're moving slowly, but we're moving closer to delivering that project. It's an underground utility project combined with a road widening. It's one of the, the top regional project according to the APC, and it's certainly very much needed for that corridor and the businesses in that corridor. And then we are continuing our pavement improvements at Lamson Airfield. We've got a consultant on board that is working on the design of improvements there. The, this work will follow the recent completion of the pavement preservation project that we did for the runway and taxiway. And that consultant is also, in fact, I got an email while I was waiting for our presentation from our consultant. They have found another potential revenue source and are, they're working on an application, and I'm meeting with them on Monday to review another opportunity. So we've, we've got a very aggressive consultant that's looking for every opportunity that we have. I'd also like to mention that the department chases every grant opportunity that, that we become aware of. We worked with Admin last year to develop a couple of, of projects for some federal funding, and we were just recently notified, and I think all of you were on that email, that it looks like we've received some federal funding for the Canock-Dy Road pedestrian improvement project. So we're very excited about that. On the water resources side, that, that group is very active in securing grants. We are utilizing a $15 million state grant right now to purchase properties for the Middle Creek Marsh Restoration Project, and that is ongoing, and we continue to purchase properties to deliver that project. We utilized another million dollars of grant funds to secure a consultant for the completion of the Big Valley Groundwater Sustainability Plan. That plan has been submitted to the state. It's out for public review, and we are on track to have that project delivered within the state guidelines for time, timing of that. And then annually, we are very successful in securing money through the state Boating and Waterways Department for continuing and advancing our Quagga muscle prevention program. That, those grant funds pay for our ramp monitors, and they're, they, it's almost an annual or full-time project now. It used to just be seasonal, but we've been so successful in grant funding that we've been able to keep monitors at some of the busier ramps throughout the year. So we're, we're really excited about that, and again, it's an ongoing program. Probably our, well, not probably, in my opinion, it's, it's the most important program that we do. We've got to do everything we can to keep Quagga muscles out of Clear Lake, and I think for a small rural county, we are ahead of, of most, and I think the program that we have is, is pretty good. So with that, again, I'll speak on behalf of, of our group and say thank you again for the opportunity, and, and I'll echo some of the comments made by previous presenters in thanking Admin and your Board for your continued support of, of us and through class and comp studies and, and everything that you've done to help us do our jobs. And again, so thank you, thank you, everyone. Appreciate it. Happy to answer any questions.
Lars?
I think Lars.
You've got Lars?
Yeah.
Matthew, do we have Lars's slide?
Oh, I did. Yeah, sorry, Lars.
And I apologize, that's probably something I did in sending it incorrectly, but if I can share screen, I'll do my best here. I think I have that, that ability now, so share my portion of the slides. It's on my other screen here, so I apologize. If you can see this, if I can get a confirmation that you can see the slide here.
You can see it.
It looks good, Lars.
All right, very good, thank you. So first, I apologize that I am not there in person. It's, it's probably best for everybody that I'm, that I'm not there, to be honest. But with a few exceptions, what I, what I wanted to do in my presentation was highlight the accomplishments of projects that have been completed. Some are going to be highlighted that are ongoing because of the level of importance, but, but that was the way I approached this presentation, breaking it down into, into the various divisions within public services that are, are quite disparate, to be, to be honest. So starting with, with county facilities, jail roof and security electronics projects were completed. The jail roof was almost a $400,000 project. The security electronics nearing $200,000, and those were much-needed facilities projects at the jail. HVAC and air filtration upgrades through CARES Act and, and a mix of general fund. There's nearly $200,000 in HVAC projects. Some of those have been completed, some remain to be installed, so that's, that's a success to highlight. The Elections Building was, was referenced earlier by Maria Valdez, and I appreciate her, her statement of the, of the collaboration between departments because it very much was, was collaborative. I included it here because it's, it's a good representation of the type of project that Buildings and Grounds does, you know, one of, one of many, but that one was, was certainly a front and center project to highlight. Backup generators, we have nearly $300,000 just in the last year, ranging from public health to road yards that are, that are going to be installed here very soon, some portables, and, and the jail project this year that will, should be going out to bid very shortly. The Board will be seeing those plans and specs for approval in an upcoming Board meeting. Telecommunications leases, the reason I put this on, primarily for the courthouse roof. The courthouse roof project has been ongoing as, as a pending project for quite some time. The, the three rooftop carriers along with all the other facilities that are on the roof have certainly complicated that project above and beyond a normal roof project. So we've, we've been, we've worked with all three telecommunications carriers. They've done their upgrades to the roofs that, that is necessary, so that roof project, again, similar to the jail generator project, the plans and specs will be coming to your Board for, for approval shortly, and then hopefully putting it out to bid. County-wide facility condition assessment, actually, the next two bullets are, are not projects per se, they're, they're more studies, you know, but they, they certainly lend themselves to the future of what we will do with our county buildings. The first one, the facility condition assessment, that is, is just what it sounds like. It's, it's a third-party assessment of, of all county buildings, ranging from true boots-on-the-ground assessment for the, the higher priority buildings, larger buildings in the county, and then some modeling of others. And, and we have next week some training on the software associated with that, along with just today receiving the, the draft report from that. So a lot of good will, will come from that. Also worth highlighting on this topic is $1 million that was allocated for deferred maintenance of, of buildings through, through cannabis funding. So that's, that will lend itself to how we prioritize the expenditure of funds for our buildings. The energy audit, and I added solar study and electric vehicle charging, that prelim report is, is due back next, next week. Scott Harder mentioned his efforts at, I believe it was at lift stations, lift stations and other water and wastewater facilities. Similar to that for, for solar with the focus there, that there's a, there's a big difference in a, in a building that is occupied primarily, you know, during the day versus the, the water and sewer infrastructure. But certainly that the solar is, is likely to be where we, where we have some opportunities to be gained there. The electric vehicle charging is, is a point of interest, and I wanted to compliment Scott Balian for, for bringing that up. And that's also a collaboration where we can, where we're looking forward to working together there. Parks and trails, to breeze through some of these, public outreach and concept designs at Seven Parks, that was done as a result of, of grant applications that, grant opportunities that we applied for, and it included a, a good amount of public outreach and, and designs that we, we now have available. Even if we don't receive the grants, we can move ahead with, with planning for how, how we can get those done in the future. And that actually is a good segue into the next item, the Countywide Parks Recreation Trails Master Plan Initiative. I thank the Board for its support of funding for that project, which an RFP will be going out here in the next week or two to get a consultant to do just that, a county-wide master plan, which we have never had, to assess the, the needs and, and get a strategic plan for, for moving ahead with, with parks. The Recreation Center and feasibility study is similar. That, that's a joint venture between the two cities, the county and Lakeport Unified School District to look at, at possibilities of a recreation center in the county or centers. And lastly on here, Clean Parks Beautification Grant, it's a $1.3 million grant that, through Caltrans, the Clean Forest Program for beautification. It was focused on, on, on public, public property and primarily parks. In this case, it also includes a component of education and outreach and marketing for, for litter abatement. The next, the last two items here, landfill, integrated waste management, I'll switch here as well. You know, all these, all these items really don't touch on the daily operations. These are, these are some of the highlights, but you know, this is a good point to talk about the, the daily acceptance of, of waste at the landfill and, and doing it within the, the requirements that we have with the various permits is, is, that's, that's really the true success. But a few things to highlight, landfill expansion is, I put on here SEQA and permits. Those are, SEQA is complete, permits are, are in hand, and the design is at about 70%. So we're looking at construction in, in 2023. That's, that's the schedule. Corollary to that is a, is a master plan for the gas collection and control system that is underway. This year, we had fire debris coming in over the last year from the, the Cache Creek Fire. It was a little under 8,000 tons that came in, which is actually nothing in comparison to, to previous fires, but, but our, our acceptance of that and ramping up to, to accept that debris is, is worth highlighting. Treated wood waste was a point of emphasis over the last year or two due to some state regulatory changes. We, we shifted and were able to, to continue the acceptance of that treated wood waste, and the state was able to kind of get back to the way it was, where, where we could accept it without undue hardship on, on both the, the public and, and, and the landfill. Lastly, a bulky item, Free Dump Day, was done in, in November of last year. This was through Caltrans, and there's another one coming up. I expect, the word is that it'll be next month. I'll be getting some more information on that, but the, the, my understanding was tying that in with Earth Day, so I'm, you know, very much looking forward to that. Lastly, museums, while it doesn't, it doesn't necessarily fit into the infrastructure piece, it is a building, but it's more about what is inside those buildings and the programs that they offer. A couple of things above and beyond the recurring exhibits, things A couple of things above and beyond the recurring exhibits, things to highlight there, there's an oral history project that they've been working hard on, and the virtual exhibits and virtual guided tours, which certainly is, is beneficial during the, the pandemic times. And, and we're really looking to ramp those up. It's, it's, it's a little cumbersome to get to them sometimes, but, but once you, once you find them there, it's, it's very, for, for a rural county museum, or museums, plural, those are, those are very, very well done. So I'm, I'm looking forward to highlighting those so that you and, and the public can access them front, front and center. So that, that concludes it, but I, I will echo exactly what Scott said, the, the collaboration among all the departments, and, and a thank you to the board, admin, county council, it's, it's, you know, really is a, a pleasure to work with, with all of you. I'm glad I got through this presentation without having to, to pause for, for coughs. I'll, I'll wrap it up there and, and appreciate it. And I'll stop sharing my screen here as well.
Thank you Lars, and again, thank you board, we'll be happy to answer any questions.
I think Supervisor Pisca was reversed, Vice Chair Scott.
Thank you for the presentation, Director Harder. I was very thankful to see that we were able to replace two of the tanks. I know originally we were hoping to do four of them. Are we in the process of looking for more grant funds to be able to complete that project?
Yes, we, we currently have a second funding application in with the same HMGP program, and we're, you know, working through that application process. It's positive, we're not getting any negative feedback, but again, it's, it's a cycle and a process, so yeah. And the good thing is the plans and specifications are already done, so if we do get funded, it's relatively a quick turnaround to get those out to bid.
Great, and I know you pointed out, you know, fire safety, that the tanks wouldn't be able to burn down, but I think too, personally seeing those tanks, all the water loss that we were, were getting, it was incredible. So we're doing a lot of good for our environment, being able to keep the water in there that we've treated, so I thank you for that.
Correct.
Supervisor Pisca?
Great presentations from everybody. I have a couple of questions for different department heads. The federal funding projects for the Scotts departments, so excited, I was actually at Kelseyville yesterday, me, I was walking from Kelseyville Elementary to the high school with a board member and met with the superintendent. They're actually working on a, they're redoing the track area, so it's, it's an awesome time to be collaborating on that. Do you know when the timeframe is for that?
I, I don't. I, the plans are done because we've had this project on the books for a while. So I, I would expect that, you know, once, once we're told how those funds become available or, you know, I, I just, I don't, I don't know how that's going to happen, but as soon as we have it, then we'll, we'll get to putting that project out to bid.
Great.
It's likely, my, my guess is it, it might be a reimbursement thing, which we'll need to include in next year's budget, an appropriation for the project and, but we'll work all that out. I'm just kind of waiting to hear what, what the details are.
Well, Superintendent McQueen is excited to talk to you, so that's awesome. And then Scott Harder, the, the feasibility study for the Full Circle project, when do you anticipate getting that up and going, and what is that process going to look like?
Again, we're, we're kind of waiting on the rules that'll come with the, with the federal funding. I've got the RFP drafted and ready to go out, but I was talking with Susan last night about it from admin, we were discussing the, the good news, and, and, and that came up. She was like, oh yeah, wait till we get the rules, because if you have to incorporate those into the RFP, you don't want to have the RFP already out on the street and then have to revise it and send out an agenda. But as soon as those rules come in for the funding, we're ready to put it out and solicit proposals.
Great. I have a question for Doug. Where are we on the clean air list in California now? Are we, I know we were at the top, but I feel like with wildfires, we may have slipped a little, so I was just hoping that you could let us know where exactly we fall.
Well, we, we are still the cleanest in the state of California, but we're not on the top 25 list for the American Lung Association, because the American Lung Association includes wildfire smoke and all the things that are exempted from attainment status. So, so what people actually breathe, yeah, we're not in the top 25, we're not that far out, but once we have a couple of years of no wildfires, we'll be back down into the top 10, so.
Awesome, that's great news. And then one more question for Scott. With, I know you did a lot of work last year on the ramps with the low lake level, since we continue to have a low lake level, are, do you have any projects that might be lined up to help with that or, or still working on, through that?
We got through the environmental process. The, the document that was prepared was sent to the state and went through the state clearinghouse. There's a, I have a draft project put together, and it just needs to be finalized, and I, I'm, I'm actually working on that, because I'm anticipating that we're probably going to need it. We're, we're about a, almost six tenths of a foot lower than we were this time last year, and we've already prepared some, some graphs and some predictions for the lake level at the end of this summer. And if things don't change, we're going to be a little bit lower than we were last year.
Okay. And then just Lars, I'm, I'm really excited for that master plan for the trails, recreation and parks, as, you know, talking with public health and behavioral health and everything that our community's been through, this is just another way that people can get outside and do things for themselves and, and have that space that's safe and dedicated to, to getting some exercise and, and the health benefits that go along with that. So I'm really, really excited.
Thank you, I am as well.
Mary, I just wanted to say a tremendous amount of solutions and accomplishments in this short time and period, and I appreciate hearing about this customer complaint. That's going to be awesome, just wanted to state that. Yes, and Scott, Scott DeLeon, I'm really excited about the, the Rhodes, the Rhodes presentation coming up, and you know, of course, appreciate, appreciate your presentation as well. It's, it's, it's exciting also with water resources, we work with you in many different facets, and so just great on that, and looking forward to those presentations. Catherine, I just want to say how deeply I appreciate you coming right in and hitting the ground running. It feels like the, the department hasn't missed a beat, so thank you again. Scott Harder, one thing I wanted to add along with your presentation that I liked is that, and I don't think it was, it might have been mentioned, but I'm, I don't know, the, the work in Spring Valley with the cannabis, those people that were grow, that were growing and using the water and you turn those off, that, that made a difference. And they, they noticed it, and I know that they're really excited about the work that they're doing with special districts out there. Yes, so, and then Doug, a response that I know at, at one time, there was somebody in Clear Lake Oaks complaining about burning and things like that, and your department's expedient about taking those right off, right, right, right off the get and going out there and making sure that they attend to that issue. So just wanted to highlight that. I know that along with the, and, and that's, that shows you how serious he is about the air, you know, so. Yes, and so Lars' presentation's awesome, I've worked with you on many different things, and just wanted to say too, that the cornhole has been a real hit over there in Lasserne. So with that, that's, that's really all I have, if there's any other questions here. I don't see any online either, or any comments, but thank you for your presentation. And I think we'll go ahead and entertain a break. We'll say about 10 minutes.
Sounds good.
About 10:50, 10:52, something along those lines. We'll see you back in about 10 minutes. Okay, it looks like we're ready to get started again. I just, it's past 10:53, but I just enjoyed all of the dialogue and everybody, you know, talking with each other. I just figured we'd let it wait a little before we start. So we're back here at, it's about 10:58, and next on the agenda for us is the financial and technological advancements, and so I will go ahead and.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think we're all really enjoying being able to be together, so that extra few minutes was very much appreciated. So our fourth group today consists of our finance and tech people. Kathy Sederland, our auditor controller, who unfortunately could not be present today after the rescheduling. Shane French, our IT director. Barbara Ringan, our treasurer, tax collector. Richard Ford, our assessor recorder. And Chief Deputy CIO Stephen Carter, who is our budget officer. Are, are we expecting Rich and Barbara?
Looks like Rich is on Zoom.
Oh, they are, great, great, thank you so much.
Yeah, great. Well, thank you Carol, thank you board, Shane French, IT director. For our group, we've got, as you mentioned, the assessor, recorder, treasurer, tax collector, auditor controller, county clerk, information technology departments. Matthew, if you want to advance to the next slide for me. Our general areas of focus, of course, are maintaining transparency, improving business efficiency, and supporting the departmental initiatives of each department. Go ahead, Matthew, all right. So for the first department, our assessor recorder has some goals that include ensuring the fair assessment of property values in the county, responding to requests for collaboration with cities, streamlining processes to facilitate timely, accurate valuations, and maximizing accountability of recorded, excuse me, accessibility of recorded documents and information. So with that, I'm going to turn this over to Rich, and he can tell you a little bit about some initiatives that address these goals.
Sure, can we jump to the second slide? Would be great. Perfect, so in the last little bit, let me kind of explain what's, what we mean by the first bullet point. So most of the years that I've been in office, we've had a process where the permit reporting to our office from the cities and from the county, which there, that's a requirement for our office, they have to report all their permit activity plus their plans to the build-outs of those properties. That has all been done on paper. I actually, for about seven years have, essentially, because we don't have a lot of room in my department as far as space, that occupies almost an entire cubicle of just plans alone. So we've been trying to work with the cities, and we've already got it done with the city of Clear Lake, to streamline a situation where they basically scan the plans, and they basically, we share a folder between us and them, and they basically notify us at a certain point in time of the, you know, finality of permits, which has to be given to us, and the plans, because they're in scanned form, that's actually going to save us quite a bit of time. We actually apex when we get the plans and essentially draw them out into the property tax system. It takes quite a bit of time. This will actually possibly allow us to not have to apex, apex the properties that we get scanned and be able to bring the plans directly into the system. We are now, since we've got Clear Lake done, we have reached out to Lakeport in the same beginning initial meeting. They are working on their plan, and we hope to have theirs up and running also within a couple of weeks. And then after that, we'll be working with the county to get theirs, which is the biggest chunk. So that's kind of what that explains, and that's why it's going to increase efficiency. There's a lot of time savings, and of course, then that time savings goes into doing other things, so other valuation, other projects, other things that increase the efficiency. So that's why that's, that's really important. We actually are nearing the start of the completion of the redaction program. We've done an RFP, and we've actually got the contract, which will become before the board in the next little bit. We basically, in our recorded documents, we need to redact all the way back to 1980, and that's what this project basically accomplishes. Going to the third point, technology process improvement for boat and module. Boats, we have quite a few, makes perfect sense, we have a big, huge lake, and because we have quite a few, the evaluations for boats is very time-consuming and very kind of labor-intensive, with not a lot of valuation to them. Probably the average valuation of a, of a boat in our county is about $2,000, give or take. But it takes quite a bit of time, and call it almost a full person. This module will basically become so efficient that it will pull in some of the valuation from one of our valuation components, in this case NADA, and it will pull it into the system, into the megabyte system, and it will streamline the process substantially, multiple steps. So again, will reduce the amount of labor that's needed for boats, which is not a lot of valuation. So we can then take that and put it on another valuation component. The mobile home assessment, same problem, same thing, very labor-intensive, not a lot of valuation. We do have a lot of mobile homes, and they're valued a lot more on an average than boats are, but it's the same, very labor-intensive, because it was very paper, and it was very labor-intensive through the system. Bringing both these modules will take something that is very, very labor-intensive and get it a lot more efficient. E-recording process, we'll spend a, a few minutes on that. So the e-recording process is roughly about a two-year process. We've already started that process, which pretty much consists of going with a third-party clearinghouse, in this case, we went with Certna, and going to the Department of Justice and getting cleared for the internal controls and make sure there's proper security to allow for the e-recording to happen, because you're doing basically recording documents in a remote fashion. So we've already got the approval from Department of Justice, we've already done our, our preliminary steps with Certna, and there's a lot, I won't go into them, but basically, we've been delayed a little bit in one aspect. In about, we, 2019, when we really kind of started this process, we approached our recording vendor, which was Halfile, and were asking for the module for e-recording. They kept kind of delaying us, and we couldn't figure out kind of why, we continued with our other processes. Comes to find out, in 2021, they announced to us that they were no longer going to be supporting us. And so we have just finished the sealed bid to incorporate a new recording system, will be an implementation, which is going to delay the e-recording, because you cannot e-record without your new system in or attached to your system, because it essentially is kind of a module to that system. So that's going to delay us. Without that delay, it would have been done this year. I don't know if the fiscal year, but for sure, probably by the end of the calendar year. Only thing we had left really was to live-scan our employees and to essentially train them on the process. Both of those were completely doable within that timeframe, but that will delay a little bit. We're hoping to get the recording system in, we're very kind of preliminary on that, and hopefully within, probably about a month, hopefully we'll get the contract to the board and start getting on the calendar for implementation. There's eight counties throughout the, 58 counties that have been notified that they basically will not be under support anymore and are going to move to a new system, so we will have to get on the calendar for that implementation. That does take a while to implement a system of that, that magnitude and, and what it's going to take, and making sure that everything's accounted for properly. So that's, that's where we're at with that. It would have been done already, but that's going to delay us, I'm hoping only about a year, and then we'll be right back on track to getting the e-recording in process. Just to give you an idea, we've taken a poll, not every county has e-recording. It seems to be of the ones that have reported to us on our polling, it seems to be about 50/50. We definitely want to be on that, and it's been a goal for us the whole time. We had to do different things with systems and cleanup systems and getting staff prepared and ready to take that on, which they are now ready. We'll talk about the last bullet point, the state brand funding for scanning characteristics. Previously, when I first took office, there was a, a grant out there, and the grant basically consisted of a very high matching, which pretty much meant that small counties, especially the, the northern counties, didn't participate in it, because they could not afford the matching, it was about 50/50, as well as the way the timeframe was set up. So I jumped on a committee through the California Assessors Association and worked with them, and we shrunk the matching substantially, which allowed a lot more small counties, us included, to bring in a, a very large grant, which we have two temps working on improving the characteristics of the properties and scanning the records. That helps safeguard the records if anything happens. We know River Ranch Fire at one point looked like was going to come into the city, that would have messed up all our paper files, and there was not a true backup to that. We are going to solve that right now. Also, the improvement of the physical characteristics not just helps our office, those are really for proper tax purposes, but there are other agencies that use that. And so that does help the economy in total. That is underway already and will continue, and I, there is no longer the grant out there currently, it was taken out of the budget, the state budget, but it is starting up possibly again, and I'm on that committee again to try and get further grants. The grant is tailored to only assessors' offices, and basically, the general gist is we run state rules. There's not a lot of local rules, we run their state revenue and taxation code. And so basically, the state needs to help us with some of that, and in some cases, the funding locally is not ideal. So through the grant program, if... So through the grant program, if it holds, helps us do some of these things to streamline and to become efficient. I think it's very, very important that we participate in that program and be on the committees and champion the smaller counties, because as we saw from the first iteration I described, it wasn't conducive at all for the small counties to participate, because pretty much, I think it was like one that participated, and they were actually buying a system, and that's how they participated. But that's pretty much it for me on my points. If anybody has any questions.
Great, thank you, Rich. Let's go to the next slide, Matthew. So next, we have the Treasurer-Tax Collector, whose goals include, man, I should have made this font a lot bigger. Goals include ensuring investment of taxpayer monies is protected, keeping the public informed on county tax-related matters, ensuring new and existing revenue streams are maximized. And with that, I will turn it over to Barbara in the next slide.
Good morning. I'd like to start with the, there was an agreement entered with Chandler Asset Management Company to provide investment advisor and management services. This is to ensure transparency of the investment pool. They are providing the county with monthly and quarterly investment reports. We also work closely with Chandler Asset Management and the Treasurer-Tax Collector Committee to update the investment policy, so be able to do that, which was much needed. It was been a while. We also performed two defaulted tax sales, which were successful, bringing 635 tax-d不予 parcels to sale. We are also having a tax sale this May. I believe there's over 900 parcels that were Board-approved eligible for that tax sale. We've also updated our website to provide important information regarding the annual tax cycle and also other important taxpayer information regarding the collection of property tax. We hope to also add to that this next year with different forms that are normally only available by contacting our office, so hopefully that we'll be able to accomplish that within the next few months. We also were successful in collecting in excess of $8 million in cannabis cultivation tax and work closely with the administrative office to implement and collect the cannabis business tax. We're also, our goal this next year also is to fill our vacant positions. Currently, we are still in our tax side of the office division. We have four staff positions, and we are currently have three vacancies, so we only have one position filled. So we will be working on that to fill that within the next few months, hopefully. And I, that is all I have for right now. Thank you.
Thanks, Barbara. Matthew, if you want to go to the next slide. So next, we have my department, Information Technology. Our goals include facilitating information sharing and ease of access to the public, increasing opportunities for efficiency in departments, and enhancing productivity of county staff through technology. Next slide, Matthew. So the notable initiatives for this year include a website redesign and content management replacement. This is a project I'm really excited about, because I think our website, as you all know, is due for a needed update. We really want to focus on ease of access for the public, make it easier for folks to find the information that they need. And we've already seen some, I think, really good implementation on the vendor that we're looking at going with right now, and how to make it easier for the public to find where do they get help, because obviously, you guys know, they come in this building, they don't have the time, know where to go, because it can be kind of complicated. And the website really needs to help address that, because I really think we need to make sure that people have an easy place to get to without having to come to a county facility. I think that we have a real opportunity here, and I know that departments are really excited about this project. I've heard a lot of feedback during the course of this selection committee for this project, and departments are really energized to get this done. The next one is actually not my project. This is Administration and HR's project, so sorry to steal your thunder a little bit, but I'm just excited about this one. This is a project to digitize some county records and also allow for electronic workflows to be implemented more easily. And that's just something that we struggle with and have struggled with for a long time in this county, is to enable these electronic workflows. We've done some work, especially since COVID-19 hit, with some electronic processes in various departments. But this is really going to take us to the next level, I really think. I think it's going to allow us to do a lot more with records management. We haven't had a lot of really good coordination between departments on records management and workflows, and this is just going to really open it up to a lot of departments to leverage technology to coordinate better between departments. So I'm really excited about that one. And then finally, you know, this year, we did a lot in the way of adding capacity and resiliency to systems that help us make sure that operations can continue for technology systems, even in the event of a disaster, such as a natural disaster, or malware, or really anything else. We've made a lot of improvements there, and we've added additional redundancies to systems that we have for backups and business continuity. We have a lot of really good technology available to us there, and all those things kind of work in the background, of course, and they're not super glamorous, but they're, in the inevitable event of a disaster of some kind, it's really going to make all the difference. So I'm excited about that one as well. Okay, let's go on to the next slide, Matthew. So for Auditor Controller, goals include ensuring continuity of business and finance functions, improving efficiency of operations, enhancing accessibility and ease of use to governmental processes, and ensuring fiscal integrity and to maintain solid systems of internal control. And of course, Kathy's not with us today, but she actually prepared very detailed notes for me to give to you on this, and there's some really good information in here. The past two years have brought substantial changes to the processes within the Auditor Controller and County Clerk's office to address goals as listed on this slide. Business continuity, efficient operations, accessibility, and easy use of government process, and to maintain solid systems of internal control that enhance and provide for ongoing fiscal integrity. And looking back over the last two years, the Auditor Controller's Department, they had the introduction of a remote workforce that was ever-evolving. They were challenged with expanding electronic document and signature acceptance while maintaining strong system of internal controls. They were tasked with preparing our established high-quality county statutory financial reports with limited external and internal staffing resources necessary for completion. They were tasked with continuing statutory clerk services with no reduction in service and touchless environment, and they had to recognize and set up accounting methods and systems for varied and large funding sources coming into the county like never before. So with respect to maintain business continuity of financial functions, throughout this time, the Auditor Controller's Office successfully maintained continuity in all financial functions. Accounts payable was timely, property tax allocations were made on schedule, and financial reporting deadlines were met. We're currently in the beginning stages of implementation of a significant governmental accounting standards board change, with the assistance of software that has been funded by county ARPA monies. Regarding automated electronic timekeeping system tested and successfully addressed a dispersed workforce, the county's electronic timekeeping system provided the critical infrastructure to enable us to maintain pay cycles with our dispersed workforce. Without that system, we would have been extremely challenged to meet pay cycle timelines, which would have resulted in pay delays. Our experience with a timekeeping system this past year has provided us with ideas on how to make the process and system improvements that will occur in the upcoming year. They also completed a financial system upgrade to a cloud environment, and we completed Phase One of our financial system upgrade, moved to a cloud-based environment. This involved extensive time and effort from the IT Treasurer-Tax Collector and the Auditor Controller's Office. It required analysis and updating of all financial processes, which included the mentioned expanded electronic document acceptance and file retention. We're continuing those efforts with a completely revamped contract monitoring system that we are building from the ground up, scheduled for completion this June. Electronic document acceptance, file retention, and file retention was significantly expanded. On the County Clerk's side of the House, we expanded our online services, form completion, and kept up for customers, or kept our customers informed of the ever-changing workplace occupation restrictions we were faced with. A clerk-doc system upgrade and online function expansion project is underway. Again, this is funded by ARPA, and we're scheduled for completion prior to midsummer. Finally, for the expansion of online and electronic clerk forms and processes, to close out, the Auditor Controller County Clerk report, Kathy would like to add that this is a short, highlighted list, and it is important to note that the completed initiatives were accomplished under difficult work and personal pandemic conditions, with a department vacancy rate that ran from 20% to 40%. For the upcoming initiatives, Kathy says she's very pleased to report that with focused effort, and as of March 7th, with the exception of one position in our Disaster Finance Division, all Auditor Controller County Clerk positions are filled, and our team is ready and excited to continue and assist with moving the county fiscal house forward in a positive manner. Next slide, please, Matthew. So just takeaways from this. The initiatives undertaken by our departments are meant to ensure transparency, responsiveness, efficiency, effectiveness, and finally, fiscal integrity. So if you have any questions for us.
Thank you. Supervisor Pisca.
Well, I just appreciate all the work that's going into efficiencies and digitizing and streamlining and kind of being brought up to where we are technologically today. So I know that all the department heads have been working on this, and it's important for us, it's important for our users, and I really appreciate this dedication.
Yes, and I, Assessor Ford, I can't wait to see these initiatives come to fruition with some of those implementations we talked about on your presentation. With the Tax Collector, I wanted to say too that the goals are very similar, but it looks like, it looks like they have a lot of things in place coming forward. I really want to give appreciation to Liz Martinez and Patrick for the help that they do on that. I know a lot of different situations we have, and different initiatives we talk about in the county. Liz is there talking with folks, and Patrick's helping as well, so I like seeing that as It'd be good to see to a mechanism to collect a refusal or neglect of cannabis taxes, so I think that's something we might need to look into later on. You know, just keeping us going, Shane, during this whole timeframe, we got that recognition reward that we obtained for the hybrid meetings during COVID, and I think that played a big role, and just always keeping us like going during this timeframe was a big deal. And so, and also with Auditor and Controller, having, doing that paradigm shift as well, you know, being capable of having us sign those things instead of coming in and signing them, adjusting to accepting different funding, things like that, that played a big role as well. So appreciate the presentation and the work, and it looks like, you know, we'll be moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. So next, it looks like we have, well, Stephen, did Stephen?
Yeah.
That's right. Wait one second, we have Stephen Carter.
Well, I'm not a department head. I'm over budget mainly. My part of the presentation was technically the admin part, but the only part I wanted to bring up related to how, what's going on related to budget, I am looking at a new budget-specific software to possibly bring forward an RFP or bid to try to get out of, out from under Excel and manual, and that's the main thing that I'm working on. And there are at least two vendors that seem promising to be able to work with our current accounting system, as well as streamline the process for budgets. That's all I was going to bring up.
Well, thank you, Stephen. I just, when I was looking for the next item on the agenda, I realized, wait, Stephen Carter's name's highlighted, and he's getting up and leaving.
So, one other small thing Stephen didn't mention that I'll add is, together, he and I recommended to your Board during the last budget update that we lift the hiring freeze waiver, and I believe that speeding process is up for everybody a little bit, and there's going to be a much broader conversation about recruitment and retention needs, but the good news is that won't be today. We'll continue that another day.
Thank you. All right, well, thank you, Stephen. People and partnerships, and it looks like this is your CAO, Hutchinson.
Yes, Mr. Chair. I'm gonna kind of wrap us up today. Of course, anything else your Board wants to discuss, we're always open and receptive to that, but just a few more comments from us. As your CAO, it's always my great privilege to work with such an extraordinary team. In particular, our team is dedicated to supporting your Board's key priorities and the county workforce. This has been a year of intensive collaboration, as we have looked to reimagine many aspects of our public services. We know the public and your Board share the vision for an even greater Lake County. We want to be proactive, not reactive. You want to lift up and connect people, not drive them apart. You want to clean up our communities, not see them decay. You want to build, not give in to fear and doubt and strain. There are always threats to our prosperity, strife, drought, tree mortality, and volatility in the cannabis industry at present are some of those. Future COVID-19 surges and other new crises may also come. However, we are and we must remain collectively committed to progress and building a brighter future, whatever the challenges we face. So I'm excited to share with you some of the highlights of our work over the past year and some of our goals for the near term. So again, this final segment is talking about people and partnerships. Matthew, if you would go to the next slide. We have supported your Board's key priorities. Largely what we do is support your Board and other departments. And so, just to name a few, we've supported task force efforts to identify key priorities, particularly around surrounding housing and infrastructure needs. This is part of the priorities of the Economic Development Task Force. We secured grant funding to help local businesses weather the COVID-19 pandemic and make our local cannabis industry more equitable as well. Community revitalization through the Roadmap Task Force, we supported development and implementation of this first-ever pilot project in the Clear Lake Oaks area. We partnered with your Board and IT and election staff to facilitate an open, transparent, and effective process for redistricting, something that happens once every 10 years. We also, as mentioned earlier today, collaborated with state legislators, Sheriff Martin, and your Board to secure the Armory Building. And what an extraordinary development that is. If you haven't had the opportunity to have the sheriff show it to you, getting a building like that without cost to the county is just one of the most exciting things that has happened here in Lake County in all the years I've been here. And the cost that it will take to get that building ready for the sheriff's use will just be so much far less than it would take to construct a building outright. So it's truly an extraordinary opportunity. So if you haven't seen it, please have the sheriff show it to you. We also supported the development and of the Recovery and Revitalization Plan, also known as the ARPA, the American Rescue Plan Act spending priorities. And today, you've heard some of the departments already making use of those funds, and much more to come along. more to come along those lines. In our office, we worked with your board and city partners to culminate decades-long efforts towards a sustainable tax sharing agreement for the annexation of South Main in Lakeport. And that process is too underway with your board participating last night in an open house and LAFCO meeting on that next week, so it does seem to be moving along. We provided hands-on administrative leadership to the Community Development Department and the Health Services Department during their times of transition. With contractor support, we guided your board's grant-funded efforts to ensure our public defender program is efficiently administered, a very, very high-cost mandate, and you'll be hearing more about that very soon. And we've refocused on our development of press releases and the county insights, opinion pieces that we put out from time to time in collaboration with your board and county department heads. It's all about telling our own story because as you've heard today, there's a whole lot going on here in county government, lots of work underway. So we also supported our county workforce. As you know, human resources is a part of administration. So the equitable wage adjustments, you've heard department heads acknowledge a number of times the difference that we believe that is making. I do believe we are beginning to see better recruitment pools and hopefully that will soon lead to improved hiring outcomes. But again, we implemented this at a time that is very different, you know, when the, with the pandemic, there's certainly been a fairly extended time when I think prospective employees weren't looking to move around. That seems to be shifting now, and so we hope in a year from now that our recruitment and retention rates will have come way up. We partnered with your board and public health to ensure that our employees are kept as safe as possible in the workplace through the COVID-19 protocol and implementing evidence-based safety measures. The evolution of that protocol continues to evolve. You'll see the next iteration of it on your agenda next Tuesday. We partnered with Mendocino County, CSAC, and others to develop and host an executive credential training program for our developing leaders. We're in the second and final year of that right now, and a number of our key staff have participated in that and benefited from it. And we're also, we also recently rolled out the diversity, equity, and inclusion training for county leadership as well. And we collaborated with department heads to hire a total of 190 new county employees over the past year. And remember that we only have allocated about 1,000 full-time employees, so that's a pretty significant number. It's 20% of our workforce. And just to kind of give that a little perspective, and you heard it said earlier when one department shared the number they had hired and they acknowledged that they probably had lost about the same number, and I think that's generally true for this number. We do lose about that many. And what is most significant about that is the amount of time and training and effort that goes into getting an employee onboard and up to productivity that we need them to function at. And so there's just a tremendous cost to a high turnover rate. So we've got to shift this balance where we're no longer losing the same number of people we bring in at the same time. And so I believe we're on the cusp of that through the salary adjustments and hopefully a year from now, things will look considerably better. Just to give you a little more context, the HR director advises me that generally we lose about 39% of our, of our new hires within the first year they are hired and about 69% of our new hires by the second year. Just since January 1st, we've had 247 recruitments take place with 46 new hires resulting from those. We presently have 26 prospective employees that are in background pending hire, and at present we have 38 open recruitments. That's across the board, all departments. So human resources has really come around, you know, in the old days, department heads had to wait sometimes 12 weeks before you could even get your recruitment open. Recruitments are now opening just within a day or two of, or certainly the same week that departments submit them. So we're really proud of that. So perhaps I'm digressing a little, but you know, I've touched on and department heads have touched on the difference that we believe the equitable wage adjustments are making and will make. And so we appreciate being able to work with your board to bring forward the fairest possible compensation for all county employees. So I'm going to just touch a little bit on some of the future endeavors that we're focusing So one of the next things that we're very focused on is energizing the community to fill housing gaps. We're convening housing stakeholder meetings and developing a three-year plan to improve housing availability, affordability, and quality of housing. As you remember, there's a placeholder in the ARPA spending plan to develop some form of better housing support, if it's a department, if it's a contract. We don't know the answers to those questions yet, but we do know that significant work is needed there. We're also working to refine the ways we do our work, optimizing our office space use through the Space Committee. You've heard it mentioned today, the digital record process that we're about to go through, that'll be a tremendous boom, not only for us in trying to do our work, but hopefully for the public and the information that they seek from us. And we're also in the process of retooling the remote work policy to, you know, help it evolve to where it should be and give some consideration to what kinds of positions may need to be remote altogether versus those that need to be in the office all of the time or part of the time. We're updating our broadband strategic plan, negotiating the sale of the juvenile hall, continuing rollout of cannabis industry supports, meaning the cannabis equity grants, and of course, much more work to implement the ARPA spending plan. Mentioned before, we're preparing the recommendations for sustainable individual defense services. We have a grant application pending to Cal OES for a chief climate resiliency officer. The hope is that that position can better coordinate and stitch together all of the many efforts that are focused on disaster recovery and resiliency. And perhaps one of the most important things, we really want to focus in the next year, not only for ourselves, but in supporting all county departments to enhance employee recruitment and retention. We want to make Lake County an employer of choice, and we're developing an array of strategies to encourage talented staff to build their career here with our organization. And when the department heads got together and began working on this agenda, we had hoped that we could weave that into the discussion here today, but I think what we've gone over so far is probably enough for today. So we, so on a future Tuesday, we would like to bring that conversation to you. We've had a lot of discussions about policies that we need to revise to streamline our internal processes, ways that we can enhance our recruiting efforts. Those are kind of on the subject of recruitment, on the subject of retention of existing county employees, some more effective ways of doing business, and evaluation form that is streamlined and easier to use, training on all levels, and much, much more. So we're very excited and expect to have that agenda item on your discussion, on your agenda within the next month or less. So truly what you have heard today is just a sample of all the tremendous work that is being undertaken to support our communities, tens of millions of dollars in grant funding, greater strength and stability throughout our workforce, a renewed and firm commitment to ensure the services we provide do promote the well-being of every Lake County resident, real meaningful progress in areas where we have struggled for decades. Our communities have faced very deep challenges in recent years, but the state of California is strong because Lake County's people are strong. Lake County's people are resilient and unflinching and creative in the face of the storms that come. So thank you all for working to ensure our county government demonstrates that same resolve.
Thank you for that, CEO Hutchinson. And I just want to add that you're, you all have put forth exceptional effort to show that you're serving Lake County in a great way, and so I greatly appreciate that as well. And I also appreciate the collaborative concerted presentations that, you know, it builds working relationships and breaks down communication barriers, and that was pretty cool. I don't know whose idea that was, but I enjoyed it.
It was yours. Great job.
Supervisor Pyska.
Yeah, I want to echo how much I appreciate every single one of you and you. I think the greatest shared priority that we all have is uplifting our community and the collaboration that happens among us and the staff is pretty exceptional. And I just, I want you to know how much I deeply appreciate working with you this last year. steep learning curve for me, all of you helped, I really appreciate that. And the admin office, whenever we have priorities, you never tell us no, you just figure out how to handle that. And even when you have to pick up other departments as interim director, that was impressive last year, and I know that was difficult, but I appreciate your staff being able to step in and do that.
Does this mean we could tell you no? No.
But, but this has been a wonderfully positive experience today, moving all of us forward, and so I look forward to this year and I would look forward to continuing our cooperation as we move forward. So thank you.
Ashley Scott.
Just want to add to my thanks, and you know, I think today demonstrated how well we do collaborate and work together as a county. I have spoken to other supervisors, others in other counties, and they're trying to figure out what our secret sauce is here, that we're able to come together and work together as a team because if we could eliminate those silos, I've already seen the work and the progress move forward. So I believe it comes down to relationships. We all, most of us live in this community, we love the community, so when it comes down to it, working together, we've already established those relationships so we're able to get our projects moving faster. So I really appreciate that.
I didn't want to come here asking questions today, I want to come here and listen. I wanted to make sure and make that a point because oftentimes I talk more than I listen and I need to learn to do the listening part a little bit more. I wanted to listen because I wanted to also appreciate everything that's being done and seeing and hearing the big picture. I think that often we don't stop to see everything that is going on. It's too easy to walk around and see the problems that we still need to take care of. So I just wanted to say thank you very much for your presentations today. I've heard every single one of you of all the things that you're working on and the things you hope to get accomplished in the following year, but thank you to you and your team because it takes all of us to get all this stuff done and accomplished and looking forward to what we can get accomplished next year. Thank you.
All right. With that, Ms. Grant, public input, if there's, I don't see anybody online raising it, I know people aren't here, but I know I should probably open it up for that. So if there's anybody in Zoom land that would like to comment or add to anything we've discussed so far. And I'm not seeing that. So with that, it looks like that's, we're coming to the end of our workshop here. Again, we greatly appreciate your work, your efforts, and you in general. So thank you again, and I'd like to adjourn, but then give you all a round of applause. So we'll adjourn and.
Thank you.[1793.11][1793.11]